We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the indication by Councilor Adams, followed by the slide of allegiance.
Lord, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Lima, and continue to remind us all, we do here tonight, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and to serve. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I'd like to amend or to add ordinance 8714 to the agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to add ordinance 8714 to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
How's I'm doing?
Motion carries. There's no request for proposal to the floor, consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin?
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract for janitorial services.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into a contract with URS Consultants.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number two be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two, to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to advertise for bids to construct a temporary roadway.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to grant a CRA tax abatement to Union Square.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number four receive and file legislation on the night agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Is anybody here tonight? I have one question. Is this gonna be totally just for veterans only?
No.
Oh, okay. Alright, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding permit renewal objections.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number five be referred to the administration for review and a report, and for them to report back by April 7th of 2014.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five and to refer it to the administration for report back by April 7th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Council for the Arts requesting permission to use the northwest quadrant of the square to hold an event.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
And the necessary legislation be prepared.
Second.
Okay, the motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Best One Tire.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to update the fire code.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to apply for a Paul Cover Day award grant.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number nine be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the Mayor regarding appointments to the Regional Planning Commission.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that communication number ten be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number ten and to approve it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eleven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for support of state issue one renewal.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number eleven be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number twelve.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Custom Clean Connections.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number twelve be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number thirteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to contract with Suburban Maintenance and Construction, Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number thirteen be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number thirteen and that's it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number fourteen.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Merrimore Industries.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number fourteen be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number fourteen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to point out that in the body of the communication, this is the 10th year for this service from Merrimore. I was pleased to see the communication in the packet. That means spring is coming. And I've only ever heard good things of their performance and due diligence to carry out their duties and responsiveness, so I will undoubtedly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I just wanna say a couple, echo a couple things that Ms. Adams said. They do, they do a great job. And the good thing about it, the guy that helping the guys out or on, on the job training with the kid, the guy, some of these kids never had a job before. And, I mean, they go in there, in the bathrooms and clean them up after, you know, people went in there and messed them up and all that, but they do a good job. They're a team leader, and he shows them step by step, you know? And he always say, "Derry, we're gonna make sure we treat them like it's, it's our home." So they do a good job, though, and like Ms. Adams say, I'm glad to see this because it's a change that we seen springtime coming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number fifteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with American Property Analyst.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number fifteen be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number fifteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number sixteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number sixteen be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number sixteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seventeen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with ODOT for the purchase of rock salt.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication seventeen be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seventeen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to ask the, Mr. Elstro, this is for next year, right? This salt?
Mr. Elstro, Mr. Elstro, let me give you a hint of what the right answer might be.
Not for this year.
I'm listening, sir. It is. The Ohio Department of Transportation through its cooperative purchase program allows municipalities like ourselves to enter into a, an agreement with them. When we do this, we are promising we will buy a certain percentage of the salt that we bid, as been played in the news this past winter. The salt companies were hard-pressed to deliver those quantities which were promised in contract for this past winter. In fact, through this purchase, this is for next year's purchase, however, we will also be purchasing a little bit of additional through this contract because of our agreements where we, like other communities, have borrowed from stocks of ODOT needs to be repaid in kind. So this will be the purchase for next year, as well as that deficit that we dipped into or what we borrowed for from the Ohio Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was concerned, Mr. Elstro, when I saw it was an emergency. So I thought maybe there was a weather forecast that I had missed.
We just had a communication about spring. We wanted to make sure that you weren't giving us a subtle cue.
Mr. Allen swears to me that we still have a few tons in the salt shed. However, he also contends that we will not need it. And I rely on Saul daily, so.
Alright, you've got pressure now. Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials. Ben Sozier?
Counsel? Everybody should have a copy of the presentation, hopefully in front of them, double-sided.
Oh, that's right. It's in the file.
Okay. The first slide is, this is the annual report we do of workers, or safety performance, really, in the health plan, the city's health plan for, so this is all 2013 data updated, if you will. First slide is, just shows total workers' compensation claims, and you can see that in 2013, they're up from 2012, although the overall trend is still down. One of the things that I think has been occurring is we've seen a lot more calls for service in the fire department because of the number of calls that they've had with the ambulance service. And that's gone up very significantly. And of course, the risk of injury has as well, and, but the department, I also know, has done some things, I think, with council's approval that are hopefully gonna help eliminate or at least minimize the risk of those injuries in the future. The next slide, it just shows the injury rate, and hopefully council remembers that the injury rate is really a measure of the number of injuries you would expect annually per 100 employees. And if you'll notice, I had circled the one for LFD. You can see the fire department is up significantly, and again, that's, I think that goes to, I talked about earlier, relative to the number of calls for service that have significantly increased in the department. The next slide is just a graph that shows the trend for the injury rate. It's still generally down, but it's an opportunity for improvement the city has going forward. Talk a little bit briefly about healthcare costs. Get to the slide that, again, is the line graph. You'll see that in 2013, the net cost for healthcare was just a little over $5.2 million. And when I say net cost, we had actually claims that were probably, one of the highest years of claims we've had in several years. It was something like $4.7 million. But we did get a million dollars of that back through the specific stop-loss coverage that we have each year and that we, that we pay for. So that significantly reduced the claims exposure. So that number is net of that million dollars that we got back, so. Employee contributions is the next slide, and you can see how those have grown, actually from, of course, in 2001, when employees didn't contribute anything for their health insurance, were up to over, just over $400,000 in employee contributions for 2013 for health insurance. The next slide is just the cost per employee, and again, you can see that that's up slightly from last year, but it's about flat relative to 2011 and 2010. And of course, there's a lot of things contribute to that. We like to believe that some of what we're doing with wellness has had a positive impact. And on the current, the prior slide, the total expenditures were relatively flat. A big part of that is what we've done in managing headcount. The headcount has gone down as well, and that's helped us manage the number of total expenditure that we've had for healthcare annually. And then the next, the last slide, see if I can get it up here. It just kinda shows our healthcare cost growth trend, it's expressed as a percentage, and it kinda compares, it compares ourselves to the national trend. And again, for the most part, we tend to trend below what the national trend is, which I think is a good thing. And again, all of the things that we do to try to manage that, I think contributes to that. The fact that we're self-insured, I think contributes to that. So hopefully, we'll continue to encourage people to take greater responsibility for their personal wellness, which hopefully, in the long term, will pay dividends. And then, what are we gonna do going forward? We're gonna continue to work towards the goal of getting employees to contribute 15% of the cost of health coverage annually. We're right now, we're between nine and 10, and the reason why I say that is we've got some contracts that are at 10%. We've got some that are at nine, and we're working to get those folks to 10. We've got one contract that's still lagging behind, but that contract expires this year, and we'll be working on that with that group as well. We want to continue to encourage participation in our revised wellness plan. Last year, we had 111 participants, which is the most we've had since we originally put the wellness program in place back in 2007. So that was a good thing. I had a lot of support from St. Rita's, which has been very good, in getting people more involved. We want to continue to negotiate towards greater cost share for employees, and then relative to workers' compensation, we're gonna continue to look at retrospective rating, which is an opportunity, potentially an opportunity to save money as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sozier.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
If I could?
Sure.
The Lima Fire Department, we said number of calls for service, but in some recent legislation we passed, per the action of the administration and the fire chief, we went and got some motorized lift equipment and stuff for the EMS, because I think there were some injuries.
That is correct.
And so hopefully, that number.
That's right.
Will come down as well.
I think that's right. That's, I think there's an opportunity that's gonna minimize the risk of injury. There's still gonna be, Chief would have to correct me if I'm wrong, they're still gonna be transporting people out of buildings, which is still gonna have some exposure, but at least once they get them to the ambulance, I think they're gonna have some support lifting people, which will be a very good thing and help minimize the risk of injury, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 714.
A resolution supporting state issue one renewal of the state capital improvements program.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that resolution number 07-14 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Resolution 714 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Resolution 814.
Objecting to the parole of Ross Caudill, who murdered former Lima Police Officer William Brown.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that resolution number 08-14 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I just wanna go on record as saying that I regretfully have to abstain from this because I work for the Department of Corrections and Rebellation.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Resolution 814 has been adopted on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 7014.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Clements, Nelson, and Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 70-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 7114 has been passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 7114 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Just gonna make a comment, especially for the people watching on TV at home. In our background, we could hear sirens, and then somebody was moving, I believe, a cart, and it sounded, quite frankly, like the trucks were running across the square. They were not. That's why I know that Teresa and I both had kinda startled looks on our face. There was some background noise that was distracting us. We'll move on to ordinance 7214.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to the purchase sodium fluoride rock salt.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 72-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 7214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 7214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 7314.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Custom Clean Connections.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Three Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Three Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Three Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Four Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Merrimore Industries, Inc.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Four Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Four Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Four Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Five Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction two Public Works Department vehicles.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Five Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Five Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Five Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Six Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Property Analyst, Inc.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Six Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Six Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Six Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Seven Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Suburban Maintenance and Construction, Inc. for the all WWTP bridge project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Seven Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Seven Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Seven Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Eight Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract to construct a temporary roadway into the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I move that Ordinance Seventy Eight Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Eight Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Eight Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for janitorial services for utilities department buildings.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I move to amend Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen to read after Section One, after the word "above", to include "with Ross and Freeze LLC, comma", and at the end, not to exceed thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars, or eight hundred dollars annually, and provide a clean copy.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen in Section One, second line, after the comma, insert the words "with Ross Freeze LLC, comma", and Section One, at the end of the section, to add the words "not to exceed thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty..."
Eighty dollars, right.
"...dollars annually." Is that the correct amount? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
As amended. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen on its first reading as amended. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Seventy Nine Fourteen has been passed on its first reading as amended by an eight to zero vote. I will make a motion at this time to allow the law director to provide a clean copy.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance Eighty Fourteen.
Amending Chapter Ten Sixty-Six of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance Eighty Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance Eighty Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty One Fourteen.
Amending Section Sixteen Oh Two Point Oh One of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio, to adopt the Two Thousand Eleven Ohio Fire Code.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Number Eighty One Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty One Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty One Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Two Fourteen.
Enacting Section Sixteen Oh Two Point Oh Eight of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio, for permits, fire suppression, hood suppression, and fire alarm systems.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Eighty Two Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Two Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Two Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Three Fourteen.
Amending Section Sixteen Ninety Point Oh One to modify inspection fees for services of the Lima Fire Department completed pursuant to the Ohio Fire Code.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Eighty Three Dash Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Three Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Three Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Four Fourteen.
Repealing Chapter Fourteen Forty-Six of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Eighty Four Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Four Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Four Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Five Fourteen.
Repealing Chapter Eight Twenty of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Eighty Five Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Five Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
Just for the people that are watching out there tonight, uh, this is just to clean up some of the ordinances in the fire department. Uh, that's what all these are. I know it kind of looks like we keep doing this every time, but it's just cleaning up some of the language in the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Five Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Six Fourteen.
Repealing Section Two Three Four Point Seventeen of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Ordance Eighty Six Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Six Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Six Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance Eighty Seven Fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a CRA tax exemption agreement with Union Square.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
I move that Eighty Seven Fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordance Eighty Seven Fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes. I'd like to say, uh, thank you guys for all the work you have done putting this together. I know it's a long time and, but appreciate it so much. And I know that can make a lot of changes in the area there, too, and a lot of people that well need it in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to, um, this has been a long process, but, uh, I'd like to know if we have a idea of groundbreaking or anything on this?
Our goal is to close and actually begin construction by the middle of the week.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles?
I just want to commend this organization for this, this idea, because it's very much needed. It's not only for former prisoners, uh, but it's for homeless. And as you know here in our community, homelessness is a, is a big issue here. So this would be another avenue for those that are, that need home and also for those mental, mental illnesses also becoming a big issue around here. So it's again, it would be another way of dealing with that in our community. So I commend this organization for their efforts.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
Uh, one quick question. Will, where it says, um, in support of housing is for veterans, will the veterans have priority over the other individuals? It will not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance Eighty Seven Fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. This is a laney as business. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to probably be the first of many to extend my congratulations to LCC on winning their Division State Championship this weekend. I had the opportunity to see it live on television and, um, didn't move. It was very exciting and, uh, job well done. This Sunday, March thirtieth, from one to five, uh, is the Ninth Lacknip International Expo. Theme this year is cultural threads, and it will be held at Lima Senior, free admission. Uh, there'll be ethnic foods, uh, Parade of Nations, uh, door prizes. Uh, I've had the pleasure of attending this function, uh, going on now, uh, five, five years straight, and, uh, I am always pleased and, uh, learned something. And it's quite amazing to see all the different cultures that are in this area. And, uh, it's a great event, so I hope you can come out this Sunday. Hope Neighborhood Association will be meeting on Tuesday, April first, at six-thirty at Unity Elementary School. And finally, Mr. President, I'd like to call a Public Works Committee meeting, uh, this coming Monday, March thirty-first, at five-thirty in the conference room. And the subject will be continuing the discussion that's in committee on honorary street signs proposal and the stormwater assessment that was referred at the last council meeting. So review. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, I've got a couple things here. Uh, again, we're going to congratulate LCC, and I was at the game. It was great. And, uh, very exciting. And also Crestview, we've got to congratulate them too, you know, both from Lima lands there. Uh, this weekend, we're going to be working on some, uh, working with some of the folks on, uh, some code enforcement problems. We had two houses there and made phone calls too, and we got a group of people going to go out and try to help them out a little bit. And I appreciate the family calling, asking for help. And that's what we need to do. Call. If you can't get it done, we'll, we'll look and try to find someone to help you out. So, with the weather looking, you know, it'll be about fifty degrees, and we can be able to get in there and do some cleaning up around there. and do some cleaning up around there. Also, uh, we're working on our job center, and it's coming along pretty good. Everything coming on real good that, because most all the jobs now is on internet. And I know, Ms. Adams, I brought it up about this project here. So we're working on putting that together, and I appreciate so many folks helping out with that, doing a good job putting that together, and so we can be able to help someone out there. Also, we, uh, we had a couple calls in the area there, and, uh, I know, uh, where the house is at. I know I got some calls last night on it. Uh, we were talking, Lima Police Department about it, and, uh, because she has just called me before I came to city council, so we are taking care of that, that problem. Also, a lot of kids going through people's yard. Please stop going through a lot of neighbors' yard. They've been complaining, and, uh, they've been giving me calls about it. I'm glad they called me about it instead of calling the police department, you know. And, uh, we're going to talk to some of the kids in the areas cutting across the yard. I know we're on spring break right now. Uh, we hoping that all the kids attend some of the centers, some of the activities they got going on. You know, the Bradford Center, the Shore Island Community Center, and the YMCA. So get involved with some of the stuff or look at your books and your next subjects you need to take for this semester. And again, we'd like to thank LCC and all the Lima land, all the graduates. That is, it was great, very great to see the kids, uh, be a tough team like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. You forgot to mention that's your alma mater, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
All right. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just want to say I attended the Westgate Neighborhood, uh, meeting last Sunday where the mayor and his staff were present, were there as presenters, and I think they did an excellent job. After the meeting, some of the residents talked to me about the information and thought it was very informative. And I think it's very crucial for our staff to get out and outside the four walls and meet with our residents, and I think they really appreciate it. So, um, the residents said they were very pleased with the information. All the speakers did an excellent job. It was information that was informative, and I think it was very much appreciated by the Westgate Neighborhood Association. So again, I want to commend the mayor and his staff, you know, for the excellent job here. Uh, I hope that we can continue to be upfront and personal with the residents. You know, many people would never come to this council meeting. You know, most of the information they're going to hear is going to be from either us or attending these focus meetings. I'm not sure how the other neighborhood association or how the other areas, what their attendance is, but the Westgate Association had a really good attendance that night, and it was very, some very good information that was shared by the mayor and his staff, so I appreciate it. And like Derry just mentioned, Lima City Schools are out this week, so there's going to be a lot more kids out in the neighborhoods. And as the weather gets warmer, I hear on Wednesday, it's going to be short weather by Wednesday, about fifty degrees. So just be aware of the kids that are around.
I thought we were supposed to get snow.
No, don't say that. Don't say that. But what I'm, what I'm hearing on Wednesday is going to be nice here, so just be aware of the kids that may be out in the, um, on the streets with their bikes or walking around. So the schools, Lima City Schools, at least are out this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I thought, when's the snow supposed to come?
Tomorrow.
It'll be mixed, though. It could be mixed, though.
Okay. All right. Very good.
It could be gone.
All right. Mr. Gordon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to, uh, congratulate Lima Central Catholic. My youngest daughter is a senior there, so you can congratulate me. She's the youngest of seven. But, uh, that was a very exciting game. I, I'm just thrilled that they, they took it all the way. But I'd like to remind people, even though we're supposed to get snow tomorrow, one thing you see when all the snow melts is a lot of, a lot of garbage out in the yards. So people get out there, pick up, pick up after yourself. Uh, I pick up after different people all the time. It's spring cleaning's coming up, so, uh, it's a good time of year to kind of get the mess out of every place. Um, and basically, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, it sounds like an old record, but I'm certainly glad to see Crestview and LCC with their state championships. That's two communities that are, should be very proud of themselves. And, uh, on the sour note, I would like to make a resolution of appreciation for one of our own police department lieutenants that died recently, John Jack Greedorn. It's been thirty-some years since the police department passed away recently. And I think it would be a very nice gesture to have a resolution for him of appreciation of the service of the city of Lima.
Second.
The motion in the second is to authorize a resolution memorializing Lieutenant Jack Greedorn, retired from the Lima Police Department. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.